This is Thursday, October 21st, 2020, 2021. Welcome. This is the Madison City Planning Commission. Roll call, please.
Mr. Watson?
Here.
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 Uh, here.
Yeah.
Here.
All right. We have a quorum. Uh, next item is acceptance of the agenda. I have three additions under new business. One is eleven, uh, let's see, eleven thousand ninety-one County Line Road. We have a site plan amendment. Uh, next item is Stafford Square Sidewalk Bond Renewal. And then the third item will be Windmere Phase Two Sidewalk Bond Renewal. So we'll handle those at the end under new business. Are there any other additions or corrections? Seeing that there are none, we'll move forward with the, uh, three additions and, uh, as published. Next item is approval of the minutes from August 19th, 2021. Any additions or corrections?
I'll send in one correction on Saturday to Johnny. I don't think you got it.
All right. Any other additions or corrections? All right. Need a motion?
Need to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Watson?
Aye.
Mr. Callen? Aye.
Mr. Ryder?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson? Aye.
Mr. Potter?
Aye.
Mr. Super?
Aye. Mr. Palmer? Abstain.
All right. Minutes are approved. Next item is public comments for any item that is not on the agenda tonight under a public hearing. Um, and that would also include the site plan for the childcare facility, which is, uh, not a public hearing. So otherwise, we ask that you hold your comments, uh, when we get to each item on the agenda and we'll take your comments, uh, in the context at that time. Um, and then, uh, when you do come forward, we'll have you state your name and address and then hold your comments to three minutes or less. So at this time, are there any public comments or anything that is not on the agenda tonight under public hearings? All right. Seeing that there are none, we'll move forward with the first item under public hearings. And that is two, three, six Cannon Drive, and that's an annexed one acre lot and zone the property R1A upon annexation. Is the applicant here and wish to address the commission? All right. Seeing that there is none, Johnny?
This is a one acre lot. It's a residential lot with a single family detached dwelling on it. It's, uh, on the east side of Swatter. Um, there's a, uh, little subdivision there, uh, off of Cannon. And you can see, uh, some of those lots are in the city and some are still in the county. Um, this is a, a pretty standard. It's, uh, they're running R1A zoning, uh, and that, uh, all the dimensional requirements of the lot are compliant with that, uh, that zoning district, the lot size and the setbacks of the house on the lot. And it's, uh, it is, uh, consistent with policy seven, uh, the residential growth plan. So we recommend approval. And we have an annexation and a zoning map amendment.
All right. So we'll need two motions. All right. All right. At this point, I'll open up for public comments. Seeing that there are none, comments from the commission?
Mm-mm.
All right. I need two motions. First one will be a recommendation to the city council for annexation.
Move to approve annexation.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Watson?
Aye.
Mr. Callen?
Aye.
Mr. Ryder?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Potter?
Aye.
Mr. Super?
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. Also need a motion for a zoning map amendment and forward to the city council for adoption.
I move, uh, move to approve zoning map amendment.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Watson?
Aye.
Mr. Callen?
Aye.
Mr. Ryder?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Potter?
Aye.
Mr. Super?
Aye.
Mr. Palmer? Aye.
All right. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the Halsey Property Annex, uh, one hundred and eighteen acres. And this is a zone of property RC2 and agriculture upon annexation. Is the applicant here and wish to address the commission? All right. Seeing the applicant is not, uh, here, Johnny?
This property is, uh, as you see, is kind of, uh, west of Hardeman Road, uh, and, uh, and east of Seagulls. And, um, they have three actions tonight. There'll be a master plan amendment, uh, to the West Side Master Plan. And that'll be to, uh, modify, uh, the PNA and MRC, uh, on the north and the south sides of, uh, of, uh, Halsey Drive. And then, uh, we'll be changing a portion of the PNA, MRC to CF, which is community facilities. Uh, first, let's talk about the annexation. It's a hundred and eighteen, uh, point two oh acres. Uh, the zoning map amendment will be for, uh, RC2 and Ag. The Ag will be seventeen point one four acres. And this will be, uh, on the area, let's go over to this, where you see the school site in the light blue. And, uh, uh, this area, um, is seventeen point, uh, one four acres. The RC2, uh, is those residential areas and it makes up a hundred and one point six acres. There's two hundred and one single family detached lots. Uh, there's twenty-four point, uh, three, four acres of open space, which comes to a twenty-four point oh eight percent set aside. Uh, the density overall is one point nine nine. As you see, there's different colors there for the residential. And, uh, the darker, uh, uh, the really dark brown is estate lots. Uh, there's six of those with a minimum lot size of twenty-one thousand eight hundred and sixty-five square feet. Those at the very north are large lots. There's forty-three of those with fourteen thousand two hundred and fifty square feet. Uh, when you get south of the Halsey Road extension, you'll see, uh, the darker areas there are medium, medium houses. Uh, there's fifty-seven of those and they're nine thousand nine hundred and forty-one square foot average. And the lighter color is cottages. There's ninety-five of those with eight thousand four square feet. Um, the, uh, green areas are those areas that will, uh, remain, uh, remain, uh, preserved. Uh, and, uh, uh, that, uh, like I said, that comes to about twenty, uh, twenty, uh, it's gonna come to about, uh, twenty-four acres. Uh, first, it's, uh, the PNA, the current PNA is fifty-five point five one, uh, square feet. The, uh, MRC is twenty-six point nine four. Uh, the MR is thirty-five point, uh, seven five. Uh, and, uh, the new PNA area will be, uh, twenty-four point, uh, uh, three-two acres. The, uh, MRC is thirty-eight point seven oh acres. Uh, the MR will be thirty-eight oh four, which is very, very similar to what's there. And the, uh, community facilities again is seventeen point one four. Um, this is, uh, consistent with the growth, with the growth plan, uh, the policy seven. And that is strategic because it does provide critical infrastructure, uh, with the school component and also, uh, the extension of, um, of Halsey Road from Hardeman, uh, to near to the west property line. Then there's about a three hundred and fifty-foot gap between that and Seagulls, which the city, uh, will, will, uh, assume, work with the developer or work with the, uh, property owner there to acquire that extra right-of-way to get that east-west connection. So, uh, those are the, the, those are the things that makes it a, a, uh, strategic, uh, annexation. Um, it, uh, the density levels in this, uh, again, are lower than, uh, what is defined in the, in the West Side Master Plan for the MR and the MRC. Uh, we, as far as the areas that are PNA or the areas that are PNA now, uh, in that north, along that north, especially along that north side of Hardeman, uh, we're gonna use the same strategy we did with Belle, Belle Woods, uh, that, uh, in the development plan, uh, you can, can only, on the private lots, you can only cut the trees that, uh, where the road will be going in. And then where the houses, the, the infrastructure will be on the lot at ten feet on each side. That's what we did with those. That was one of y'all's suggestions. And, uh, we are recommending that you do the same here. And, uh, with these, uh, uh, there's, there's, uh, these maps kind of show the difference in, in, uh, configuration of the, uh, place types. And, uh, this right here is a, uh, from the West Side Master Plan. And we bring, I'm bringing this up because you see the provo, proposed school site, uh, up at the top. And, uh, about, uh, quarter of a mile south of that, you see, uh, where an existing, uh, school was presumed to be. And, uh, they didn't know exactly where we would have a school then, but, uh, the West Side Master Plan was looking ahead, uh, for, uh, with the possibility that a school would be in this area, could be in this area. So we have three motions here, um, or three, uh, considerations and one is the, what is the master plan. One is the annexation and one is the zoning.
All right. Thanks, Johnny. All right. At this point, we'll open up to public comments. You might be, you can come up to the microphone, state your name and address, uh, limit your comments to three minutes or less, and we'll try to get through these in order.
Thank you. Uh, Jeff Enfinger, I'm the developer and thank the opportunity to be in front of you again. Um, this is, we like to think that we've developed a lot of nice product in Madison. Uh, some of the nicer developments if I, if I get to take my own home just a little bit. Uh, but this is, uh, an opportunity to do the same thing. It's, uh, it's not quite as big as something like a Cliffscovert, Harry's Plantation, but we intend for it to be a nice product. The, uh, the parks that we have will be nearly twenty-five acres. They'll be public access parks. We'll have a greenway through the community that'll connect to future greenways. Uh, we, uh, have been happy to accommodate the school board with the, with the, part of our purchase is going directly to the school board. Uh, the landowner, um, Cecilia Halsey agreed to donate it at half of the cost she, she was going to cha, charge me. And so this was quite a savings for the school board to, uh, from their perspective. We were happy to accommodate that. Uh, the houses will be priced between four hundred thousand and million more or less. Uh, and so we, it, uh, it will be a nice addition to the city of Madison. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Enfinger. All right. I think we had a hand in the back. Yeah. Come on up to the microphone and...
I live in Long Meadow, which is going to be part of this development. And I'm trying to figure out which it is. I think it's gonna be the large home site is actually going to be directly across the road from me. And the question that I have is that we are a very small community there in Long Meadow. It's just one little road that has, we have cedar acres in the front and green fire in the back. Um, the question that I have is, are you guys planning to open up access to Long Meadow as an ac, exit point for this neighborhood? Because I realize that would increase the traffic. And we don't have very wide streets to begin with. And that's one of the concerns.
It currently does not show an access point to Long Meadow. Um, I think that's probably a discussion point we need to...
Okay. Cause I know there is, there is a tract of land, like literally to my right. There's like, right now, I think it's a horse farm and stables. And there was some mention, and I can't remember if it was a rumor or where I heard it, that there would be an access point or a little road exiting from this new neighborhood down through Long Meadow is another exit. And I just, that was just a concern for myself and for the members of our little section of the neighborhood because...
Okay. I'll make a note. I think we need to probably discuss that. I also had a similar question, but we'll wait until we have our...
And the school site, that would be, um, is, do we know anything else about the school that would be going there? Or is that just, right now, it's just proposed?
Yeah. All I know is this is a school site. I'm, I assume it would be an elementary school, but...
Okay. An elementary school? Okay. Oh, well, good. I need that. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Next. Come on up. No? All right. We'll get everybody.
Diane Bowsack. I live off Halsey Road. Um, I have, it's, we have a nice little area back there and very little traffic. And we like it that way. And I'm, have concerns about what's gonna happen to our road.
Okay.
So can you tell me, is that road going to be opened up to, through traffic to connect to Seagulls or?
I believe that is the intent per the drawing. Yes, is to go, is to open up east-west and that's per the West Side Master Plan.
Is there any way we can object to that?
Just did.
You just did. And then, of course, and of course, we'll be making a recommendation to the city council. So, um, you know, you'll have another, another opportunity at city council, assuming it passes tonight here. So, uh, but yeah, that's the intent is per the West Side Master Plan that we will have an east-west connector.
John Bryson. I live at ten two two one Halsey Drive. Uh, I'm in the, my house is in the, uh, I guess the white area, uh, to the south of, of Halsey. And my questions are basically the same. Uh, what's gonna happen to our road? Uh, it's a pristine area. Uh, we've been there twenty-three years and I have really enjoyed living there. And the concern is obviously the traffic. Um, the, uh, inflow of, I didn't know about the school until tonight. So, uh, I don't know if that's been fleshed out. Um, this is really catching me all off guard because I don't know the details, uh, until what I have seen here. And I'd really like an opportunity to, to study those a little bit further. So, uh, but I'm opposed to it.
All right.
Could I ask, are, are you in the county or are you in the city of Madison? I was just trying to understand where you were.
Really? Well, I'm still in county, but we're, we are, we have a Madison address.
But are, but you're not in the city of Madison?
No, ma'am.
Okay. I just wanted to make, okay, thank you.
Mr. Enfinger?
Go on.
There are, uh, two roads that enter the Boulevard from the south. And, well, this has to do with engineering and preliminary plans, which we'll be getting to in January and February, not necessarily now. But we fully intend to tie to those roads and let they'll have access to what within at that time be a public road.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Anybody else?
Hi. Jocelyn Beller. Um, I've lived here for eight years. And I have actually lived in two of the neighborhoods and live in one currently at, uh, in Taylor's Crossings. And I have a neighbor up here on the planning committee. Um, I lived in, uh, Hardeman Place for five years and now I'm in Taylor's Crossing. And this did catch me off guard. And I'm sorry, I'm not as prepared as I like to be. Um, I have been trying to busily get out the word to my neighbors and friends. Um, I think it's important that everyone knows this is happening. Um, we have no way to notify people. I think even people within a one-mile area should have, uh, a piece of mail in their mailbox that says this is coming because it will affect them directly. Um, planning, we did that with West Side Master Plan. Taxpayers paid a hundred thousand dollars for that plan. This was not on it. What was on it was a roundabout, um, but we've already added multiple subdivisions since then and even repaved Hardeman Road, but made no adjustments for the amount of traffic. Why? Because it's not planned. This is not a good plan. In fact, I would say it's a bad plan. I'm worried for myself, my family, and my neighbors. We can hardly turn left out of our driveways. There are three subdivisions on Hardeman Road before you get to the curve. The speed limit is forty-five and the curve is thirty-five. There are places on Wall Trianna and similar where the speed limit is forty miles per hour. We do not have sidewalks or safe crossings for our children. There may be a reason we call ourselves the Jets at James Clemens High School because our kids have to jet across a dangerous road to get to school. It will become even more dangerous once the subdivision goes in. There's a roundabout plan for where we have a stop sign. We do not need the traffic to flow. We need a stoplight. We need traffic to stop so we have a chance of getting out of our subdivisions. We need to stop so our kids can have a chance of safely getting to school. Our schools are full, even our new schools. We had nine hundred and sixty-seven new students last year alone to Madison City. What is the plan? Let's see it on paper first before we keep adding more headaches and not looking out for the quality of life that we all bought into. Three high schools is a game changer for our area. Statistics say you will not be able to maintain the quality of all our schools. Uh, is that what you want? Is that what the taxpayers want? We need to take a breath, stop, and plan. This is not a plan. I don't want to wait until there are enough accidents and yes, deaths to put in a traffic light or do what needs to be done to prevent deaths. We can plan for this. Please do. Uh, we waited quite a while for that light at Hardeman, uh, Road and County Line. There were lots of accidents before we finally got one in. It was very scary for all of our teenagers. Um, also, a question was raised about this school site. I mean, I think it's nice that they've, you know, let the city have that for half price, so they say. Do we know about that land? Um, does it retain water? Is it buildable? Is it gonna have extra costs to build that school on that land? Um, I think these are all details we need to look into. I think it's great. There's parks there, but I don't have a way to get to the parks. I would have to drive down the street, turn left out of my driveway to use that park. Um, so those are things I hope you will consider tonight. Thank you very much for your time.
All right. Thank you. All right. Any other comments? All right. Seeing that there are none, comments from the commission?
Have the schools chimed in on this, been involved?
And I have, I have a good bit to say about that as well.
I'm, I'm sorry. All right. There's a, I'm sorry. There's a question for staff.
Um, yes, the schools have been involved. Um, the board hasn't taken any formal action. So the school representative is in at this meeting this evening. Um, but I can say that when we were first approached about this project, um, the first thing that I did was reach out to the school district and we had an onsite meeting. Um, the district was given a choice of locations on this property, basically by the developer. Um, they've involved their school architect to look at it from a, you know, is it big enough, um, aspect. Um, and obviously there will be studies, you know, they're gonna work out their site plan and so forth. But we've involved them from the very beginning. Um, we said this is a great opportunity. Uh, Florida District now has an elementary school within this location, uh, basically south of Powell Road. And, um, and we had already identified a possible location in the side master plan. So it's just moving a little bit farther north. So we're very encouraged by the conversations and, and expect this to, to hopefully go well for the district.
Any other comments in the commission?
Um, so many of you commissioners know that I spoke many, many, many times to this commission before I was on the commission against annexations and that kind of thing. But I'm not doing that tonight. Um, I, um, first, I want to commend the staff, Johnny, Mary Beth, and all the people who worked on this and the property owner and the developer because this is a plan that can be worked with. Um, they're bringing several positives to the table. And, and you all, many of you know me that I'm very, you know, I've had my eyes on all of these things for a long time. Um, and I ask a lot of questions. I met with a super, I spoke with the superintendent and the school board president this week to, to verify, um, all the things that, you know, we, I just wanted to double check on everything. Um, the superintendent says this is a desirable property. It's correct that the architect has already been out there and determined that he could build a school on that site. Um, it's incorrect to say that there's no planning that's gone into this because a tremendous amount of planning has gone into this. Um, Dr. Nichols has said that because of the, the, the site and the, and the, um, work that was done on this site and the offering of the school, the desirable piece of property, that he, he sees it as a, a welcome, um, annexation, basically. And while he says, you know, he said it would probably bring, uh, two hundred homes, uh, the students from those homes would not be a tipping point in needing additional high school or middle school at this point. Uh, he did say he doesn't want us to annex two hundred homes every week. Just because, even if we say yes to this, he doesn't want us to just open the floodgates and say yes every week. But for this particular property, um, he and the school board president see that it could be a good thing. Um, what Mr. Enfinger mentioned about the agreement, they also shared with me that they are going to be getting this at a reduced price. Um, and they very much appreciate that. In fact, my only concern about this entire project is that they don't have that as a signed agreement yet. And if we were, if our vote tonight meant that tomorrow would be in the city, I, I would be cautious. I would say, well, I'm not ready because there's not an agreement. Um, but it does go to the city council. And in conversation with Mary Beth, you know, she, there is time before the city council has to approve or address this. And, uh, I would expect that there would be an agreement. And she expects that there will be an agreement, as she told me, before the city council votes on that. What I would like to see us do, if, if you are in favor of this, um, which I am at this point, um, I would just like for there to be a recommendation that goes along with it, that there be an agreement before the annexation is approved. Um, I think everybody's acting in good faith, but I wouldn't want to bring a property into the city and hope that there's gonna be a deal for the school system on that property. I would like to know that there's going to be a deal. So is it possible when we vote to add a recommendation that we would not recommend council, or, speaking for myself, my vote would not be yes unless I recommended to the council that there be an agreement, a signed agreement between the property owner and the school system on the price of that property.
Okay. Thank you. Yep. I got that noted. Um, I want to go back to, um, a comment that I forget the nice lady had stated about Long Meadow. And I kind of noted the same thing that, um, whether there should be a sub-street access to the north, um, if that, uh, I believe there's like a horse farm or wooded area to the north that may eventually would get developed. Um, so there's, I guess I have two questions. First of all, that northern section has like forty-two houses. So there's only one exit from that area. Um, and if that area was ever to be developed, the only access to it would be from Long Meadow. Um, and whether we should have an alternative access to that, uh, which also according to the West Side Master Plan does show kind of a north-south, I mean, we're hitting the east-west and the school aspect, but also showed a northwest, or sorry, north-south access through that property. So, um, back to the point about the West Side Master Plan that kind of, we're cutting off the north, northside access to that. So it would be, uh, just a sub-street at this point not being developed, but, uh, whether we should reserve that.
Um, so we, we did talk about that as staff. Um, uh, and certainly I think that, um, there's advantages to it, to have that as a substrate, a substrate. The, um, developer would prefer not to lose a lot or two. Um, the fire department did look at this. They do not require a second access point from there. Um, and we made sure that they were fine with the access proposed. Um, at the end of the day, as staff, we didn't push for it because we were so excited to secure a school site and to get a collector, you know, a road through, which is, um, really significant for overall access. Um, but we don't disagree that it, it probably would be nice to have a sub-street. Um, even though I understand the speaker was concerned about that, right? Cause they don't want to have that access into their neighborhood. Um, so it's something that is, that the commission can, uh, deliberate on. And, um, certainly the developer could answer any questions.
If that property was sold at the end of Long, Long Meadow and there was not a sub-street, then all the access traffic would go through Long Meadow versus having, you'd get twice the traffic through Long Meadow versus half and half, right? So, I mean, there's an advantage.
It's hard to know what will happen, but if it's possible. Yeah.
I mean, so, I know you don't want the traffic there, but it would reserve, it would actually split the traffic if that ever gets developed. Yeah. Well, if somebody develops beyond that, there's nothing, it makes it even worse. Um, Mr., I don't know, Mr. Enfinger, you had a comment or you just?
Um...
Since you're the developer, I'd like to, I guess I'd like to know your opinion on it. I guess, I know we closed public hearing, but as a developer, I'd like to hear your opinion on it. Cause normally I would think we'd want a north access there.
Well, I'm old enough to know not to argue with the chairman. I won't be doing that.
I understand you're also trying to sell homes and you don't want, you know, people, you know.
But there is not a plan as to what's, what I would be tying to.
Right, right.
And, uh, and so it's an unknown. And you, it's a, it's a small group of lots. It's a high price point. It helps me in creating value to have something where the highest price point is enclosed and not necessarily connected to an unknown. And so it would be very destructive to the plan. And, uh, it, I mean, we're doing a, we're, the Boulevard, the connection to Macyale, the, uh, the expense going out to Hardeman. I mean, all of this, we're paying a lot for the land. We're paying twenty-five acres of parkland. We're loaded pretty heavy.
Okay.
And I'm asking to not be, I'm, I'm asking that you not put the additional loads. That doesn't, it seems like something, it may not seem like something that's an easy thing. But I lo- but I lose $100,000 lot, and it costs me $50,000 to put in, so it's a $150,000 expense for me without a demonstratable benefit to the city.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, any other comments from the commission? We technically closed public comments, but.
Go ahead.
Come on up, and we'll do it real quick, but if you got a quick comment, but technically, we took all the public comments, so.
I'm Donna's husband, I live just at the north, over the north end of the property that's going to be considered. We have a great deal of traffic on Burgreen coming into James Clemmons Drive for all the high school students in the mornings and the evenings, and I'm sure probably some of those 200 some odd houses will have maybe high school age students. Is there any possibility or any provisions for some way to allow for either foot traffic, you know, via sidewalks or bicycles or something that might help alleviate traffic going along Burgreen from this area, like a connection from the, since it does have a greenway, is there any way we could connect it somehow to James Clemmons, or is there a possibility?
I think that's future development, it'd be whatever the adjacent property or the city wants to do. I don't, I think we're talking outside the bounds of the property, right?
We're doing all we can to help out with the property we've got. I will also mention that we've negotiated with adjacent landowners that would continue the walking trail, and so our intention would be, if we're successful, our intention would be to have that walking trail go at least to Burgreen, and then where it goes from Burgreen to school would be up to the city.
All right, Johnny, can you flip back up the three motions for us? If you got the remote? I think we're done with commissioner comments. I heard a recommendation, I believe, with an amendment to the first motion. So I need a motion for the first one, and?
Move to motion to approve Resolution 2021 PC 001 for master plan amendment to the, with that master plan vision map to reconfigure the parks and natural areas, the mixed residential conservation, and the mixed residential place types, and add community facilities. And what was the, was there another addition to that? Okay. Okay, okay, all right.
All right, you need a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Would you run them?
Aye.
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 All right, motion carries, I need a second motion.
Move to approve the annexation of Halsey Properties forward to the council for adoption.
Second.
Roll call.
Would you run them?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Ryder?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Potter?
Aye.
Mr. Seaver?
Aye.
All right, motion carries, need a third motion.
Do we amend that annex, is that when we amend this? Okay.
So we'll take a fourth, we can, we'll hand the years on the fourth.
We'll have a fourth, okay.
Okay, so for the third one?
Move to approve the zoning map amendment and forward to council for adoption.
Second.
Roll call.
Would you run them?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Ryder?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Potter?
Aye.
Mr. Seaver?
Aye.
All right, motion carries, and then we need a recommendation.
You want to make the motion, Dr. Johnson?
I'd like to make a recommendation that there be a signed agreement between the school system and the property owner about the sale of the property designated community facility before the city votes on the annexation of this property.
Second.
All right, roll call.
Would you run them?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Ryder?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Potter?
Aye.
Mr. Seaver?
Aye.
Mr. Potter?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Potter?
Aye.
Mr. Seaver?
Aye.
Mr. Potter?
Properties and it's the old Powers Farm that goes way back. I walked this thing many times when we were trying to scout out the path that we wanted to Bradford Creek Greenway. This Powers dog got after me every time.
Give an extra fifty.
The property is divided into two zoning districts and the top part is R2, the bottom, the south half is R1A. And they're our, planning for, or requesting the layout for forty-six lots on the R2 part. The smallest lot is ten thousand five hundred and twenty-two square feet. Largest lot is fourteen thousand eight hundred and fifty-six square feet. The density of that area is two point one six dwelling units per acre. The, the R1A will have twenty lots. The smallest lot will be eighteen thousand square feet. Largest twenty-five thousand five hundred and eighty-three square feet, a density of one point eight dwelling units per acre. The overall density is one point six six dwelling units per acre. They have a pedestrian access to the greenway from the, kind of the south end there. There is a common area that they can go through and access to greenway. They have two access points to Moose Chapel Road, one from the R1A area there and one from the R2 area. And we would recommend approval. We do have three engineering contingencies. We need a core determination for the site. We need Moose Chapel entrance left turn lane. We need a drawing for that. And they need to remove the detention pond on Lot Forty-Eight. It should be in a common area.
All right, at this point we'll open up for public comments. Come on up.
I'm Walt Lordkine. I live at one eight eight Moose Chapel. Been there since ninety-six and Madison's going on thirty-nine years. I have five plus acres there and the entire area is unsuitable for construction. It is a wetland. In the wintertime, early spring, late fall, it's pure muck. My concern is the flooding aspect of it. I found that the Palmer property snuck a culvert in there and all the flooding is coming from the north down onto my property. Corps of Engineers has already designated part of my property. I don't know what you call a smaller stream, but it's there. So having lived there that long and known that the water table is so high, my concern is the construction and the effort of a load of dirt that would have to come in and make it high, which means I'm going to get flooded more. The neighbors to my south that are not adjoining, they have a flood area also. So that's my biggest concern that I bring to you that I don't see how they're going to do it. And as an example, when I first bought the house, I was in the back part, which I normally keep all wooded, which I enjoy, I sunk down to my waist. Luckily, there was a tree branch here to come up. So it's been the same forever. You can look out in the morning and just see the shimmering water that's there. We've got a lot of habitat. That's the biggest concern on the, on the density of, you know, I can't stop progress. I don't intend to. But we need to be smart how we do things because that is, as you all know, all you have to do is walk the multi-use path. When it rains, it floods. And that's what we're dealing with out there. And just inside, that, that one road you have coming out of Moose Chapel, I measured it today because it's right north of my property. It's right at forty-five feet. I don't see how you're going to put a road in there and you're going to address sixty-six properties owners. That's my biggest concerns that I bring to you and I appreciate the time to speak to you.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other public comments?
I'm not sure if I'm out of order. I just, I was listening and this subdivision is smaller than the other one. It comes with a light. Do they have a light that you've built into the plan?
Is it a traffic light?
Yes. Is that a light turning left? Okay, you talked about something about making it easier to turn left.
There'll be a turn lane into the subdivision off of Moose Chapel.
A turn lane. At least there will be a turn lane added. Okay. That's good to know that you do add things in like that normally to some of these plans. However, that wasn't what happened earlier with the Halsey property. Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, any other public comments? All right, closed public comments. Comments from the commission and I'd like to, maybe we can start Johnny with, or engineering, any, the drainage, the flooding and drainage, I assume. That's going to be dealt with by the city as part of building this. Just want to make sure we address those concerns.
Yes, so when they do the site assessment, the Corps will give us a determination on the wetlands and the areas that we basically can't touch and what we can. So we'll have that when we get the site assessment and then the drainage issues we would evaluate when we get the plan submitted.
So that'll be evaluated once at a later point?
Yes.
And we'll make adjustments from that?
Correct.
And what about the width of the road, the southern road? I guess the gentleman had some concerns with the road. Property's not wide enough?
I can check that. I don't have an answer for that currently.
Okay. I don't know what the, is it fifty feet?
I don't know.
What the requirement is for subdivision of this type?
Fifty foot right away.
Fifty foot right away, so it needs to be at least a minimum of fifty feet and put that road in there? Okay, so we'll check that?
Yes.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Other comments from the commission?
I will verify that that's a swamp.
Yeah.
Yes, sure is. And then, I know if, until we fix the drainage running up and down Mill, Mill Road used to flood completely to where they shut traffic down. The greenway floods all the time, we know that, that's whatever. But Miss Powers' property and the ones that are built up on Mill Road, all those properties, they all face significant flooding. And the folks that have built there recently had to raise their land before they built the big white house across the street. Spent a fortune raising that property to build that white house. And it's still probably, haven't been in there in a flood, but I bet you it floods too.
Exactly. Mm-hmm.
That's right. No, I mean, I know they've been doing some work up and down the, the stream, the creek there, trying to improve things, but I will, I will be in the eighteenth corner four times about the flooding in that area. And before I ever approved anything, I'd have to make sure that the flooding was squared away. Because the standard answer is that we approve a plan, there won't be any more flooding off the property than, now that's, you know, that's what we say. But in practice, I've lived that one since two thousand eight or three. I support what you said.
I do too.
I agree with you also. So I just want to make sure I understand kind of the ordering of things. So right now, we're looking at the layout and then it's dependent on the Corps of Engineers to approve. I'm kind of looking at Michelle, but you have to get a site assessment and things would have to be approved. So nothing's going to be built until we, we have another chance after we hear and after the property owner hears about the site assessment to possibly revise the layout and that kind of thing, right?
Correct.
I just have caution about approving all these homes. I just want to make sure that we have another chance to hear the site assessment, hear from the Corps of Engineers and see possibly a revised layout before people start building houses. So is that the order that things come in?
Yes.
What's the value added to the city with sixty-six residential lots? I mean, before, there was some value added. East-West connector to Seagulls, I think is a biggie.
This one's zoned residential.
Yeah.
Zoned.
Right.
When the, the site assessment is done, does, is this gentleman's property taken into consideration? Because I could see where exactly they might say, oh, you know, raise the level five feet, but then I can see exactly what's going to happen to his property when he all of a sudden becomes the lower ground. So when the site assessment is done, is it done only on the boundaries of this property or is it done kind of in a general area to see how it's going to affect the neighbors of this property?
But per Mr. Potter's statement, they're required to retain the water on their property. Now, I guess, you said, does it really happen? I don't know, but by law, they're required to retain the water on their property, right? And it's not supposed to flow off any more than it did prior to the construction, right? My layman's understanding of that.
Can the developer be required to extend their site assessment beyond their boundaries to see how it would affect neighboring properties? Could they be required to extend the scope?
I don't think so.
have all the information of how it's going to affect his property as well. Thank you.
Be based upon the radius from the property.
I was attempting, but I was doing a proper, you know, we checked the.
It's got to be a joint entry for a flat.
They get the water. You understand me? It's like Mr. Potter said, that water's coming all over town. I'm not an engineer, but you raise the property that's under construction here, there's going to be water coming from someplace. You can't hide the water everywhere. You've been here long enough. We have a lot of underground streams in this area. I understand, but you know, I don't want to call soup, but obviously, if that's going to happen, it's going to happen.
We just need to ensure that, that they understand that we're stomping our feet on this.
Mm-hmm.
That's, that's what we're doing. Yeah.
All right, I had, I guess I had my turn for two other unrelated comments, particularly with sidewalk access. So since they did draw the sidewalks on here, I would expect that there will be some on Moose Chapel or the stretch that does face Moose Chapel, that there will be sidewalks there. Since they draw all of their sidewalks.
Concrete sidewalks.
Yep, on Moose Chapel. And then, I believe there should be a second access to the greenway on the, I guess it would be the north side of the property, somewhere around Lot Twelve. Should be a second access to the greenway, just not the one at the other end. Right, the, on the north side of it, yeah. But I'd like to see one from the neighborhood somewhere around Lot Twelve, which is the northwest corner of the subdivision, adjoining to the greenway, off that lollipop or whatever we call those.
Sure.
The circle. But I recommend that we add that as, I guess, a contingency. Listen, males thinks otherwise. Those are my two comments. And I do agree, we need to make sure before we move forward that all the proper drainage and let land, issues get addressed before we move into the preliminary plats and whatnot. Any other comments before we take a motion? Anyone? Got your motion? I need a motion to approve layout plan for a farm at Sunny Springs with contingencies and I'd like to recommend that we also add a sidewalk easement between Lots Twelve and, let's say Twelve and Thirteen. Can I have somebody make a motion to that effect? In the affirmative? No, I can't make a motion as President, but I need somebody to make a motion to that effect.
I'll make a motion to what he said. Because I don't remember it all. Something about making, making a motion to approve the layout with also additional easement for a greenway access point on the northernmost part of the drawing.
Yeah, subject to contingencies and the addition of a second, second greenway access point in the northwest, something like that. All right.
Second.
All right, roll call. Aye.
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 All right, motion carries and again, we'll, we'll watch this one real carefully when the surveys are done. All right, next item on the agenda, let's see. Barnett Crossing Phase Two Preliminary Plat for seventy-five residential lots on ninety-three acres is the applicant here in which to address the commission. All right, Johnny?
I know this is supposed to happen, but this is dangerous for me. I just think this is dangerous over here.
Want to trade seats?
No, I mean, you know, walking back and forth.
We have the second phase of Barnett Crossing, which is just east of Greenbrier Hill subdivision. And this is a preliminary plat. Most of this particular subdivision, or this phase of the subdivision is in the R3 section. Most of these lots are, all but three are villas and cottages. This is, in the age restricted part of this, this subdivision. And so they are extending three streets, as you can see, and they're adding a new street and they'll be putting detention in the southwest corner. We, I don't have much more to say about it. It's, we recommend approval. With engineering comments, we need an approved layout in the set. They have an approved layout, but we like that to be in the preliminary plat set. So they need to add that sheet and provide Atkins and Alley storm drainage structures. And we recommend approval with those contingencies.
All right, open up for public comments. Seeing there are none, comments from the commission? I know I have at least one. Johnny, the greenway, twenty-foot greenway easements, are they, we're going to, they're restricted from building berms in the stormwater on the easement, correct? For prior discussion?
It's, you can see it, it's on that.
I see the twenty-foot easement, but it goes right through the stormwater.
I have talked to the engineer, which is in the back during our tech review meetings, that they're going to have to figure out a way to make that, make a way for them to be a greenway and path at least to that west property line, adjoining Greenbrier Hill.
So they're not going to build a big pond in the middle of my easement, right?
Well, and I'll, you know, Luke could maybe have more, he may have already started working on that.
Or twenty-foot berm, noise berm, and then they have to put the greenway on top of it. You're protecting that.
You could see a lot from the top of it.
You can, but I don't think bicyclists like to go up and down. They like flat, right? I just got to make sure we protect that because that was in the master plan to have a greenway through there, so.
We've already had a lot of discussions.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we're, we're good there. Any other comments? Before we take a motion?
Recommend approval, subject to contingencies.
Second.
Roll call. Aye.
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 All right, motion carries. That closes public hearings. Next item is childcare facility site plan for eleven thousand nine hundred seventy-three square foot child, childcare facility on one point one eight acres. This is north of Waterson Way and west of County Line Road is the applicant here in which to address the commission. Welcome.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for allowing us to be here. I'm Mark Conover with Eight Fourteen Services. We've been working on this project for, for some time now, working very well with staff to accommodate engineering department comments, fire department comments, and come up with a layout that, that we are proud of. Looking forward to continuing on with this project, moving into the engineering and the architecture part of it and developing this property with a childcare. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Johnny?
This property sits in the northwest corner of Waterson Way and County Line Road and it's on B3 or B2. And you see that we're, this is a picture of the childcare facility and it's eleven thousand nine hundred seventy-three square foot building. They have a play area there to the west. They will have thirty-three employee, thirty-three employees and they'll have hours from six AM to six PM, or eleven employees, eleven parking spots, I'm sorry, and for drop-off, two for ADA, thirty-three for regular, regular customers to any bond to park. Very easy site plan as far as most things go. The only controversy we had on this is a fortified plat that created a lot north of this and that created a flag stem out to, out to, if you can see the Heritage Assisted Living Facility behind it, you see the drive, that lot, that's part of their lot and that's their driveway and this was, this will be their access port. And there is a public, we believe a public ingress egress easement. Went over this with Megan and she's in agreement that it's public. They did not think it was public and, but it is and they have every right and order to use it as far as we can tell. So, but I figured they might be here tonight to contest it, but they're not. But I know Megan's been in touch with their attorney, so it may be all nothing.
We discussed that when that was built and I, I recall it being public. Yeah, I mean, I remember that was years ago and, and when that all went down.
You know, the main reason it's public is it saves us more driveways on County Line Road.
Right.
That's why, that's why we did it. So we recommend approval and we have no extra contingencies.
All right, thank you. Comments from the commission? Seeing that there are none, can I get a motion?
Move to approve the childcare facility site plan.
Roll call. Aye.
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 All right, motion carries and then we had the three additions, next one being eleven thousand ninety-one County Line Road Site Plan Amendment. Johnny, you want to walk us through that?
I will.
All right.
Property is on County Line Road Two. It's on the east side. It's a little bit south of Mill Road. And you had the site plan and a subdivision coming to you in January of this year and this is what you approved. And you see, there was two buildings, one story each. One building was six thousand one hundred and sixty-three square feet, the other was ten thousand five hundred and forty-five square feet. They came in with their building plans and they added a second story to the smaller building to raise that square footage to seven thousand two hundred and seventy-seven square feet. The building to the south, they added a mezzanine and so that increased the square footage to eleven thousand two hundred and thirty-six square feet. See those little red circles? One is a maintenance or equipment room there that was dictated by the fire department that they put it there and the same with the HVAC there at the top. Those are the only changes in the footprint. This was approved by you, so changes to the site plan have, or changes to the building plans that reflect the site plan has to come back to you for, for an amendment. But everything is compliant. It just has to, since they increased the square footage, they'll have to reapprove it.
All right, thank you. Comments from the commission?
So this is still the same, whatever they were building it for, their zoning, it all still matches whatever it is they're building.
Two stories now.
Okay, all right, thank you.
What's the, the distance from the back of the building to the back of the lot to the adjoining neighborhood is still the same distance? Offer. Square and height?
Just one.
Yep, yep. Okay. All right, need a motion?
Move for approval.
Sorry, roll call. Aye.
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 All right, motion carries and then we got two more, Stratford Square Sidewalk Bonds.
Don't have anything to add. Everything's in order and we have the revised letter of credit, credit. Engineering told me everything is, is ready for signature.
All right, thank you.
Recommend approval of Stratford Square Sidewalk Bonds.
Second.
Roll call. Aye.
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 All right, and last item is Windmere Phase Two Sidewalk Bond Renewal. Johnny, same?
Yes.
Same, all right.
Moose Chapel Windmere Phase Two Sidewalk Bonds.
Roll call. Aye.
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 All right, motion carry. And with that, we'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.